Okay, good evening. Welcome to the 1,940th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. The meeting is now in session. We will start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance offered by Councilwoman Kathleen McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. McIntyre. So today, like I said, is the 1,940th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This will be a voting meeting. The minutes of this meeting will be approved on March 23rd of 2022. Ms. Nash, will you take the role, please?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Present.
President Jolly?
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. At this time, I would like a motion for the meeting minutes of February 28, 2022.
So move.
Support.
Motion from Toy, support from McCullough. Ms. Nash, can you take the vote, please?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Present.
Thank you again, Ms. Nash. At this time, we have a special recognition of the Franklin High School bowling team. And to make you feel welcome and at home here at City Hall, we'll have our very own patriot up here on City Council, Mr. McCullough.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want to be proud of that or not, but Mr. McCullough will be reading out the commendation for you.
Yes. On behalf of the city of Livonia, Michigan, please accept our sincerest congratulations to the Franklin High School Boys Bowling Team on winning the Division One State Championship on Saturday, March 5th, 2022 at Thunder Bowl Lanes in Allen Park, led by head coach Dan Heczka. We are proud of you and your achievement, and we wish you much success in the future. Go Pats! Come on up! Let's get this!
If you'd all like to come up here right in front, we can take a picture if somebody has a camera.
And then you guys, the speeches will commence after.
Hopefully, you might want to get in the front. Just saying.
Okay, so this guy right here bowled 300 in a singles.
Congratulations.
Nice going, guys. Nice going.
I'm grateful.
Tallest team I've ever seen, geez.
I know.
Bunch of basketball players.
You know Franklin.
Good evening, Coach. Please let us know your name and tell us all what your team is.
Hi, so my name is Dan Heczka. I'm a Livonia public school teacher, 28 years. On behalf of the Franklin Bowling family, I'd like to thank you for this recognition tonight. These young men have worked very hard at their craft, and I'm very proud of their efforts and accomplishments. In addition, the parents behind us have been very supportive for all the needs of the boys and the team. We could not have done this without the parents. I'm so appreciative of their continued support. They took care of all the details, so I could just concern myself with coaching. Just to give you a brief overview of our program, varsity bowling is in the fourth year of existence in Livonia Public Schools. In that short time, this group has won three division championships, one conference championship, two regional championships, and now an MHSAA Division One State Championship. This group of young men has set multiple state records this season alone. They own a state high game, they own the state high gamer of 1268, which is 255 a game for five bowlers, and they also own the top, three of the top 10 high games in Michigan this year. The Patriots have won, have, excuse me, three of the six top high series in Michigan, also claiming a top spot of 2326, which is 232 per game. The 2022 Patriots were the only team to have four All-Region Bowlers in Michigan: Josh Bombaluski, Ian Kane, Keith McCloud, and Ian Wright. Franklin is the only school to have two first-team All-State Bowlers in Michigan, Ian Kane and Ian Wright. Also, the Patriots are the only team in Division One ever to win the state, the team-state championship and the team, and excuse me, and the singles state championship in the same season. On Saturday, March 5th, Ian Wright captured a singles championship in dramatic fashion. If I could just introduce my Patriots real quickly, gentlemen, when I say your name, please stand up. Junior Sam White. Junior All-Conference, All-Region, All-State Singles State Champion Ian Wright. Senior All-Conference, All-Region Josh Bombaluski. Senior Griffin Cartier, who's going to bowl at Madonna University next year. Senior All-Region, All-Conference, All-State Ian Kane. He's a young man, bowled 300 last Saturday. Senior All-Region Keith McCloud, who's also going to Madonna to bowl next year. Not with us tonight is sophomore Alex Mengele, senior Jordan Suruck, and my assistant coach, Rich Niehazel. These are our Patriots. Once again, thank you very much for this recognition. We are literally thrilled. Thank you to Mary Bowl Lanes, which is the home of the, the homehouse of all Livonia teams for their support, and thanks honestly to the community for all the support they've given us. It seems like everywhere I go, everyone's asking me, "Hey, how's the bowling team? How's the bowling team?" So we really do appreciate how high school bowling has taken off in the city of Livonia and the community's support. These young men have made the community proud in and out of the classroom. Thank you very much. Forever Patriot Pride.
Thank you, Coach. Congratulations to everyone.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavick?
I had one quick question for the bowling team. Did you guys win or lose against Churchill?
Beat them.
There we go.
Twice. We didn't ask.
Go Pats!
What about Bentley? No.
All right. Well, congratulations. Okay, so at this point in the meeting, we have 30 minutes set aside for audience communication. Audience communication is set for 30 minutes. Each individual person who would like to address an issue that is not on the agenda this evening can come to the podium up here. You will be limited to three minutes. Anybody who does not have a chance to speak during the original 30 minutes will be allowed to stick around and wait till after the meeting, and there will be another session of audience communication at that time. Is there any audience communication? There appears to be none. That's, I don't know, well, I guess...
Question. What if I have something that is on the agenda?
Then we will call you up when it's time for the agenda, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we will go to council communications. We will start with Ms. McIntyre, who will be announcing the retirees from the city of Livonia for February 2022. Ms. McIntyre?
We have one retiree, and that is Mildred Lee, who was a custodian, serving the city, and a custodian with the Department of Public Works, serving the city for 25 years. And we thank Mildred for her outstanding service, her dedication. As we know, it was the custodians who were very much on the front line during COVID, and that was when no one knew exactly what the transmission vectors were, and we did not have an abundance of personal protective equipment, but we needed them to help ensure the safety of the people that had to come to work every day, like the police department and the fire department and a number of other departments. So thank you again, Mildred, and we wish you a very happy and healthy and long retirement.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements from the council? Mr. Barr?
Yeah, it came to my attention that a man that some of us may know, his name is Joseph Drolamo, passed away this last Sunday. And the reason that's notable is he was 101 years old. He was, he lived in Livonia for a good portion of his life, 69-year resident of Livonia, World War II veteran, served in Patton's 7th Army in the European Theater of Africa, France, and Italy. He's known as the Boogie Woogie Bugler when he was in the Army because he took creative liberties on its interpretation of the music as the Camp Bugler, and he continued to play bugle through the rest of his life. Worked at Ford Motor Company for 32 years, was very active at VFW Post 3941 and American Legion Post 32. I think it's in that capacity that many of us have seen him. He was honored as Livonia's Veteran of the Year in 2009, was honored on the floor of the State Senate, was honored on the floor of the House of Representatives in Michigan, involved in a number of ways in our community, including volunteering with Churchill High School's junior ROTC program. Just a tremendous citizen, 101 years old, passed away, and knew who he was, but just recently, at a, at a community dinner, was, had the good fortune of sitting at dinner with his great, great nephew and great niece, and just their admiration for him was, was very obvious. And when I heard that he had passed away, I just thought it was worth mentioning that at a council meeting tonight. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. On Thursday, myself and Councilman Morgan were able to attend the Livonia CERT presentation, award presentation, and they were given the Presidential Volunteer Service Award. There was 12 recipients of the award, and I can't remember off the top of my head, but multiple of the volunteers had volunteered for some odd 300 hours in the, in the previous year. So it was awesome to see that many people receive awards, especially award that prestigious, and then just to see the amount of dedication. These are all volunteers. The Livonia CERT team does a lot, the Community Emergency Response Team, but there was, there must have been 20, 30 people there. So a lot of, a lot of good volunteers, and it's indicative of Livonia and the dedication that resides after our community. So I just wanted to give them a shout out and say job well done to all the participants. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. Anybody else from the council? There appears to be none. So in terms of my announcements, we'd like to wish a happy birthday to our Assistant Superintendent of Public Works, Mr. Moore, Doug Moore. And with us here tonight at the meeting, we have some, the brain trust of the city. We have Todd Zalinsik, City Engineer, Paul Burnier, City Attorney, Susan Nash, City Clerk, Mark Toramina, our Director of Planning and Economic Development, Ms. Sarah Kasparitz, our Manager of the Council Office out in the audience. We have Ms. LaShawn Thomas, our Director of Governmental Affairs, and we have our special guest, Ms. Lori Prochutsky, our State Representative with us as well. So at this time, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is items number 1 through 18 on tonight's agenda. These items were previously studied at the study meeting and determined not to be controversial in nature and will be voted on as a single item. This does not mean that they are any less important, but that they are items that require no further study or discussion at this time. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Support.
Motion from Toy, support from Donavick. Do we have any audience communication? There appears to be none.
Where did the bowlers come from?
Yes, sirs. You'd like to address something on the consent agenda?
Yes, I would.
Okay, what is your name, sir?
Dennis, but I go by Danny Berenson. I live at 20012 Wayne Road, which is in the Deer Creek subdivision, and I'm representing the Deer Creek subdivision.
What item are you speaking to, sir?
Number 14 will replace an important section of the road in our subdivision. It's Ellen Road. It's from Morlock to Eight Mile.
Okay.
You have to ask for a motion, I think. Take off the consent agenda.
Go ahead, sir.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
My purpose is actually to show appreciation for this road, which will greatly enhance the main entrance to our subdivision. I'd like to thank engineering, the roads groups, divisions, you council people, and especially all those voters who 10 years ago voted for the millage that helps repair our roads. And I'd also like to urge all voters in Livonia to come out in August and vote for the renewal for the roads millage. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Seeing as there is no additional audience communication, Ms. Nash, will you take the role?
Council?
I'm sorry. Items 1 through 18, again, consent agenda.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The consent agenda passes, and we will move on to item number 19. Unfinished business, the proposed amendment to the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended from the Department of Law. Petition 2021-11-01-08 submitted by Schoolcraft College to rezone the property at 17950 College Parkway, formerly Unit 15 of College Park condominium, located on the east side of Hagerty Road between Six Mile and Seven Mile Roads in the southwest quarter of Section 7, from C1 Local Business to PL Public Lands. There was a public hearing in regards to this matter on February 23rd of 2022. Council, can I have a motion, please?
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
Approving from Donavick, support by Toy.
This was a first reading.
Oh, I apologize. So...
I'd like to offer a first reading.
First reading from Donavick, then. So typically with a first reading, there is no vote. A vote only occurs after a second reading. So item number 20 is a proposed amendment to Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended from the Department of Law. Petition 2021-11-01-09 submitted by Schoolcraft College to rezone property at 17420 College Parkway, Unit 11 of College Park condominium, located on the east side of Hagerty Road between Six Mile and Seven Mile Roads in the southwest quarter of Section 7, from C4 High-Rise Commercial to PL Public Lands. Again, a public hearing was held on February 23rd, 2022 in regards to that. Can I have a first read?
I'll support that.
Mr. Morgan offers the first reading. Item 21, proposed amendment to the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance from the Department of Law. Petition 2021-11-01-10 submitted by Schoolcraft College to rezone property at 13001 Merriman Road, located on the west side of Merriman Road between Glendale Avenue and Schoolcraft Road in the northeast quarter of Section 27, from N2 General Manufacturing to PL Public Lands. Public hearing again was held on February 23rd, 2022. Can I have a first read on that?
Support.
We'll do a first read from Mr. Morgan on 21 as well. And moving on to item number 22, roll call. Proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law to amend Section 020, Title 10, Chapter 48, right-of-way and private parking to conform with recent amendments to the traffic ordinances. A first reading was given on that matter by Kathleen McIntyre on February 28th of 2022.
I will offer a second reading.
There's a second reading at this time from Ms. McIntyre. Any comments from the council?
We don't need support.
We don't need support on second readings. Any council comments? There appears to be none. Any audience communication? There appears to be none. Ms. Nash, can you take the role on 22?
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes. Item number 23, award of contract from the Office of the Mayor in Government Affairs regarding lobbying services to secure Wayne County ARPA dollars for Project Catalyst launching Livonia Vision 21 from budgeted funds. Can I have a motion?
I'll offer an approving. Support.
Approving from Mr. McCullough, support by Mr. Donavick. Council, any comments? Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a number of questions that I had about this when we covered it in the study meeting. I had asked the mayor to be here tonight to answer some additional questions and represent the item since it originated from her office, and unfortunately, she's chosen not to be here. There's, and I had a lot of things to say about this, and this issue is significant. $43,000 is not an insignificant amount of city resources. It's money that all comes from the taxpayers. And this item, and the item of, the question of hiring capital relations, is a lobbyist for the city has a, has a history with this administration. In the mayor's first month in office, January 2020, she and I met. I was the, she was the newly-elected mayor, and I had just been re-elected as City Council President, and she indicated to me that she wanted to hire a lobbying firm and put them on retainer. And I asked her what she wanted to, what she thought we needed to hire a lobbying firm for, what it was specifically that we needed them to do that we didn't have the capacity to do. And she said generally that she thought we needed better representation in Lansing. And then I asked her if she had an idea of who she wanted to hire, and she wanted to hire capital relations. The principal of capital relations, and I believe the firm has had a long association with the mayor. And I told her that, given it was a brand-new legislative year, and she was brand-new in office, and things were just getting sorted out in Lansing, that I didn't think there was anything specific that we needed a lobbyist on retainer for. And by the way, the, the mayor is always free to reach out to any council members on any item. She doesn't take the word of the city council for whether or not there's, or the president as to whether or not there's support. And I don't know if she reached out to other council members or not, but there was no further pursuit of hiring capital relations as a lobbyist on retainer at that time. And then we met again in February, and it came up again, and I told her I still didn't see that we had a need for it. And then, as we all know, what happened, COVID hit in March, and everything that we knew about everything, the city, the state, our lives, right, were upended. And several months later, it was probably April, May timeframe, it became clear, and maybe it was, maybe it was April, and I, the, the timing, I think, for all of us the last two years, just in all the months kind of run together. We knew that there was going to be money that would be, come through the federal government for communities, because communities were completely, you know, all of a sudden, had all these costs for first responders, protective equipment. We all remember what it was like. It was a nightmare, and communities were just completely uncertain. No one knew what was going to happen to property taxes, and the federal government correctly realized that communities could be left on the brink without some additional funding. And so the, the principal of capital relations very generously donated, I think, 2,595 masks to the city. It was greatly appreciated. A number of those were, each council member was given an allocation that we could give to senior groups or community groups, or anyone that we knew in the community needed them. If you recall, at that time, it was difficult to find protective masks. And then, as, as things started shaping up about how this money was going to come to communities, the mayor approached me and told me again that she thought we needed to hire capital relations to make sure that Livonia got its fair share of the money. And I suggested that we didn't know enough about how the money was going to be allocated, and it was starting to look like the money was going to be allocated based on a formula called, without getting too technical, CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Money. And this is, these are funds that come every year from the government to communities, and they are allocated strictly on a formula. And the formula has to do with the age of your housing stock, the age of your population, the percent of your population that lives below a certain income line, other things. I believe some of it is English not spoken as a first language, and it's, but it's all formula. And I said that I did not think that a lobbyist was going to be able to help us with that share of the allocation. And sure enough, that first allocation was completely strictly based on CDBG, and I don't know if any of you remember, there was a lot of discussion. The mayor rightly pointed out in the media and to us and the community that Livonia was really not receiving its fair share of the money based on our population and based on the impact COVID had. But that was the way it was. Dearborn, Redford, Detroit, all got significantly more money than we did, and, and it all had to do with being a formula. So most recently, we had a very long discussion with the mayor about the structure of her office as she sought to reclassify the position of Director of Administrative Affairs into a Chief of Staff position and give the position a significantly higher wage. And we had a lot of discussion about who was doing what in the office roles and responsibilities. And during the restructuring that the mayor had done of her office, when she came in, she told us, as she restructured things, that one of the things that she was doing with the restructuring was increasing her staff's ability to lobby on behalf of the city. And so during that discussion on the restructuring, which took place probably about a month ago, maybe a little bit more, the mayor did not tell us that she had hired capital relations last year on a, for a contract to help us with some COVID, I believe some COVID-related money and projects. And she, she is, the mayor can hire and, and commit to contracts under $15,000 a year, and if they're for professional services, there's no requirement that they need to be bid out competitively. But she did hire them for, just under the $15,000 threshold, I believe around $14,000. Again, this is completely within her purview to do so, and, but didn't share that with us. So then, when she met with us individually to talk about our major project, which is a new senior center, and I, I really don't like to even call it a senior center because it implies that it's a facility similar to what people know today as a civic center, senior center. What we're talking about is a, a building that now reflects the needs of our large, vibrant, and growing senior population in the 21st century. It would be connected to the, to the Kirksey Recreation Center. The facilities, the amenities, everything about it would be much more useful, much more accessible, allow for much more appropriate and much-needed and, and loved programming. So a very worthy project, and we have an opportunity through the additional subsequent tranches of COVID money, which we're, which are being given for, and they are not driven, they're not formula-driven, they're driven by which communities have the best projects. And a lot of this funding will be, will come through the county. And when the mayor presented her project to us, and again, these were individually, just, you know, one-on-one, part of the, part of her vision, and the vision for the senior center is fantastic, is to hire a lobbyist to help us secure the funding from Wayne County, and the lobbyist is capital relations. And so that was the reason for a lot of my questioning in the study meeting and why I was hoping the mayor would be here tonight. There was a lot to unpack in looking at how I was going to vote on this contract tonight. I want to thank Shannon Price, who's actually here in the audience tonight, and Shannon would be our principal, our, our primary liaison, doing most of the on-the-ground work for us with Wayne County. And Shannon was very generous in spending a good part of an evening, sitting down with me to answer every question I had, hear my candid concerns, exactly what we would be getting for our money, and answered every question I had, and was able to bring me to thinking that this is an appropriate expenditure of money. And I am going to be able to support this. It's, and we discussed this in the study meeting, it is conditioned upon a number of things. The capital relations is to report out frequently, and if you will formally, meaning something in writing or a very clear conversation with bullet points about what they're doing, what they're accomplishing, who they're working with. Wayne County is the largest county in the state. It is complex. Financial and funding decisions are, to describe it as best I can, a Byzantine process that has a lot of stakeholders. Livonia does not necessarily have the strongest voice at the county. We have two commissioners that represent Livonia. Terry Morecki represents most, until our, until our new maps go into effect. Terry Morecki represents most of the, most of the city and does an outstanding job for us. David Kinesik represents part on the east. He does an excellent job for us, but there are 15 commissioners, and there are layers of decision-makers, and many, many stakeholders of the county. Mr. Price has, and, and the principal of capital relations have extensive experience and knowledge of the way the county functions, and also relationships with many of the people at the county. And so I am comfortable that the $43,000 is an appropriate expenditure. There's just one other comment, and then I promise- and then I promise I'll be done, Mr. Chair. When we talked about it in, at the study meeting, and, and we, I should add that we had a, we had a committee meeting on this subject. Several of my colleagues expressed their view that, well, it's only forty-three thousand dollars, and we're looking to maybe get up to 10 to 12 to 15, I'm, I'm sorry, it's forty-three thousand dollars for the contract, but we could get, you know, 10, 12, 15 million dollars from the county towards this project. And so, if you look at it that way, the, the ratio, right, of cost to return is certainly very appropriate. Or, but I don't think that's the right question. The question is not, is it only, is forty-three thousand dollars really a relatively very, you know, tiny portion, excuse me, of this multimillion dollars? To me, it doesn't matter whether the expenditure is a hundred dollars, five thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars. The question is, do you need to spend it? And I am convinced and very comfortable that this forty-three thousand dollars is an appropriate and reasonable expenditure, and I'm very comfortable that capital relations, and again, Mr. Price, who will be our, our primary liaison, and our boots on the ground, as we like to say, our shoe leather lobbyists, will be instrumental in helping us deliver this project. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy, we'll go to you first.
Oh, you want me first? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, thank you very much to my colleague McIntyre for her brief, no, for your, for your explanation. And we all need to study subject matters further. I had the great honor of serving with several of those fine commissioners that we have away in County down there in the Michigan Senate. And when I approached them and talked to them, they admitted Wayne County is a very unique kind of situation that we're in, in, in serving in the state level, as Representative Pahuski could tell you, we're known as the adopted stepchildren in this state. Because while we feed into the system, we also have to do some real quick dancing to get dollars up there and to make ourselves known. Wayne County is much the same type of, what would you call it? I don't want to refer to it as an animal, but I want to refer to it as a very difficult needle to thread at times, and you've got to know what you're doing, especially with the personalities that others have dealt with. And that's why, quite frankly, cities, municipalities, townships, whatever, hire lobbyists. And a lot of people would say, that's a bad word. Well, it can be a bad word, but most of them are pretty fair. Most of them come to you and explain what's going on when you have eight million things on your plate as a legislator and both as a councilperson. We don't know every person down there. Like I said earlier, I had the privilege of serving with at least five of them down there. And I'll tell you, they all have different personalities, and they have different feelings about the districts they represent, as you know, because they represent different sectors of our county. So, I think it behooves us, as I studied this more, as the councilwoman had as well, it behooves us to get some people that know what the heck to do down there, because we need this money. We've got to move this city forward. And if we don't begin to do that, we're going to trail behind a lot of these other cities in this county. So subsequently, her points are well expressed. But by the same token, I think it is a good investment. And so, I'll be voting for it, and I appreciate the study that others have given this, as I did. And hopefully, that explains my position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Oh, you're calling, gotcha. I believe Ms. Thomas is here representing the administration. I had a couple of questions if she'd be willing to come down, or whoever's willing to speak on this, but I'm assuming it's you, LaShawn.
What is it?
As, yeah.
Hey, Nick Thompson.
Hey, LaShawn. Couple of questions I wanted, just as a follow-up to what we talked about the study session. First was, I'd asked you at the study session where, so we've got fourteen thousand that's been spent already. We're asking for another 43. And I'd asked you where the money that has been spent came from, and I believe you said from the Department of Governmental Affairs budget, right? Did I understand? Okay, I just, and then, the remaining 43,000 is, do I understand, is coming from the same source?
Yes.
Okay. So, so my question is, and it's just a budgetary question, so when I look in the budget for this year, there was thirty-six thousand dollars that was budgeted for this that I see here. We're talking about a total of 57. Can you explain where that 21,000 dollar gap's coming from?
Sure, absolutely. So, because we have other, like, for example, we put salary at a higher rate, you know, for the next year. We have extra funds that we can move from that salary portion of the budget into that consulting line item.
So, just doing some quick math, and I'm not, we're talking about your salary here, so I'm not going to bandy that about here.
Thank you.
But, but, but I'm familiar with, with what that is, and I see the number here, and that does not explain the 21,000. I don't, I don't see the 21,000 dollars here. So, I was just curious, again, where that's coming from. Because even in the total here, we don't, it doesn't add up.
Well, that's a really good question. So, for that, what we need for right now, I mean, we're going to have another budget coming up in the next fiscal year. So, I mean, we're, for what we need for, from now until the end of the fiscal year, we have covered it, covered it, covered in budgeted funds.
Yeah, I, I hear that, but I'm not seeing where it's coming from. Even, even that math doesn't add up. Is there?
Well, I guess what I would say is, in the next, the contract is going to go until February of 20, February 28th of 2023. And because of that, we are, there, we're going to be into another budget cycle. So, I see what your question is, though, in the sense of, if it does say budgeted funds, you know, you're saying that it's not necessarily in the budget for this year. I do understand that question. But we're planning on putting this in the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, which is going to include the rest of that contract.
Okay, that makes sense. I'm just telling you, quick math here, we're still 10,000 dollars short, even if we prorate the remainder of this, for this, the rest of this budget year, assuming that we're getting a prorated amount the next budget year. So, I'm just, all right. I didn't intend for this to be a hard question, but I'm growing increasingly uncomfortable with where this money's coming from. Unless, are, are you guys not planning to prorate this evenly across the months? Are you back-ending it into next fiscal year?
It should be, it should be distributed evenly. And that might be a question that we can certainly check with the finance director about, because he did review this prior to, to make sure that we would have the proper funding for this. So, that would be a question that I could always follow up with him and ask.
Another question, and this isn't so much a question for you, thanks.
Sure.
I, I don't think I have any more questions for you. The other question I have is, I guess, for the law department, through the chair, to Mr. Burnier. I'm, Mrs. McIntyre did a fantastic job, a very thorough job of walking through the history of this. One of the things I'm concerned about because of what was done outside of council's view by keeping it under the 15,000 dollar threshold, I'm concerned about that happening again. My question is, would there be any problem with, if, obviously, if the maker of the motion was okay with this, of us adding language to this resolution that says that any extension of this contract, regardless of amount, be subject to council approval? Is there anything that legally that would keep us from adding that stipulation to this tonight?
No, I don't see anything that would, but it's for, for this period of time. I mean, you would have to put a period of time in there, because as, as council knows, there is, everyone calls it the pocket amount, the 15,000. And I think what council's concerned with is that you might have this 43, and then be able to add 15,000 on later. I'm guessing...
It's happened once.
Well, there were different fiscal years and different budgets and different concerns. I don't believe, and again, I can't speak for the mayor, because I wasn't involved in this conversation, I don't believe there's any intention ever to do that. That's why this was brought to you on a budgetary issue of 43,000 dollars and didn't bring it at multiple 15,000 dollar, 15,000 dollar contracts. Can you put that in there? Yes, I would just ask that it be specific as to what period of time you're talking about, if you're going to put it in there.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, it, it does make sense. I'm trying to process through, my, I'll just think out loud, it's probably dangerous to do in a public meeting, but what I'm wondering is if, if we tied it to an extension of this contract, if that would be satisfactory. But then, there's nothing keeping someone from just doing a new contract and saying it's something fresh. So, that probably doesn't get us anywhere. I guess, that's fine. I, I understand. And the, the concern, I know, has been noted, and I guess we'll just trust the, the accountability, the political accountability of that, that there wouldn't be an advantage in doing that again. I also am going to, even though I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the answers I got on the budgetary concerns, I have a lot of confidence in our finance director. I'm sure this has been looked at. I'll follow up, because I'd like to know where that money's coming from. I will say, just a few comments, just to explain what I'm going to do tonight. There are, and I won't go into the detail that Councilwoman McIntyre did, but there are a number of aspects of this, and the way this has been handled over the last two years that I do not like. It, it's part of what contributes to the sense of skepticism that anybody that watches these meetings knows is pretty routine around here anymore with, with, with proposals coming from this mayoral administration. I will say, too, I will also thank Mr. Price for the extensive time that he allowed me to ask questions on this and to get more clarity on what this involved. That was very helpful. That also, not necessarily with him, him, but just the more I learned about this process, raises plenty of issues and questions that there will be other times to discuss. But as much as I am frustrated by what has led to this point, I always try to stay disciplined with what's this issue before us right now, and what's in the best interest for Livonia. And like Councilwoman McIntyre, as uncomfortable as I am with many things that led up to this, I do believe that there is justification, and there is the return on investment for, for what is being asked for here. And so, when looking at this issue on its merits, I'm prepared to support this tonight. And I will just say that I will be watching this very, very closely, as we've asked for those reports to be shared with us, to see what kind of results we get as a learning opportunity for the future. So, thanks.
Any other comments from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy.
If I may, you know, I'm, I'm getting a strong sense that we do have some members that aren't feeling comfortable with this. And while we don't make everyone in this world happy, including ourselves, you know, if this was the older council that I've served on, they'd put this thing back into a committee and look at it. And not that I'm advocating that, but I thought that's where McNamara was going, or McNamara, excuse me, McIntyre was going at first. But, and I don't mean to regress on it in any such way. I appreciate the fact we're looking at a lobbyist and paying them. But I think the point that Councilman Barr brought up is one that struck me. And that is, that there is a history that we've had here, okay, that we are regressing on some of these amounts. And that bothers me when it comes to money in this city. And I would like us to put in some language, whatever that takes, of an expiration date on this, or something, a time certain, whatever you want to call it, a sunset, so that this council can review things. I'm tired of this council giving away their, 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 their due duties to look at things and balance things out in this city. They got to start stepping up to the plate. It's not to say anything against the administration, because I think they've done a good job, and they've looked at it. But I do think it behooves us to be that check and balance that we're supposed to be. And I think this is one issue. When we're going outside, starting to hire lobbyists again, there's tons of lobbyists in this state, everyone. This isn't the only game in town, but they're one of the better ones for Wayne County, don't get me wrong. But all I'm saying is, I would feel comfortable with us doing, and I bow to the law department to help us on that, to look at what language we could put in there to give it a little more teeth, so that we know when this expires, or, you know, how it expires. And maybe I misunderstood your comment earlier, but I think Councilman Barr and McIntyre bring up a good point on that. So, I'm sensitive to it.
Thank you, Ms. Toy.
Yeah.
I see no other comments from the council. Do we have any audience communication in regards to item number 23? Last call, none. Ms. Nash, take the roll, please.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. Item 23 passes. We'll move on to item 24, rezoning petition from the Planning Commission. Petition 2021-12-01-11 submitted by Maple Real Estate Group LLC to rezone the east 58 feet of 9120 Middle Belt Road, located on the east side of Middle Belt Road between Joy Road and West Chicago in the southwest quarter of Section 36, from RUF Rural Urban Farm to C1 Local Business. A public hearing was held on this matter on February 23rd of 2022. I'll note that we have new data, as provided by the petitioner as well. Counsel?
I'd like to offer an approving.
Support.
Approving by Donavick, support by Toy. Counsel, any comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Donavick.
I do have a question for the petitioner.
Mr. Petitioner, please go to the podium. State your name for the record.
Hi, Sam Fekie, on behalf of Maple Real Estate Group.
Hey, Mr. Fekie, thanks for coming today. First, I think it is, I know we're just talking about the rezoning. To give some context to the rest of the audience, this is a small portion of the land. It's vacant land in the area of Middle Belt Road, just south of West Chicago. This area is owned commercially, and then there's a small portion of this land that is zoned URF. And they're proposing to do a development there to make it consistent with the rest of the development. In terms of development, looking at the plans, beautiful, beautiful plans. I did notice that there was one dumpster enclosure, there's two dumpster enclosures for each building, but there wasn't a third for the third building. So, I was just hoping maybe you could provide some context there, whether it be today or, or later on via email, or however you choose, to get back in touch with us. I just worry that there'll be a buildup of trash, maybe at that third building, because the dumpster enclosure isn't close enough in proximity. Unfortunately, we know people can be lazy sometimes, and such a beautiful development, I don't want to see. I want to make sure we're as successful as possible at this development. And there is two other dumpster enclosures. It almost seems for each building, it'd be nice to see if you could fit in a third. So, that's just a little bit of my input. And, but I will say, beautiful property, and looking forward to potentially having more housing available for Livonia residents in this real estate market. It's difficult, and there's not a ton of inventory out there, and we have an opportunity to provide some really high-end furnishes for, for residents, and that may not necessarily want to buy a home, but they want to live in Livonia. And I think you're, you're providing that. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. It's a great point, too. I just noticed that. I didn't know that there wasn't a third dumpster.
That's why I get paid the big bucks.
I'll have to ask that question to the architect, and we'll, we'll get back. We're going to get a second round. We're going to come back for a waiver, which will really dig into the plans and the design aspects of the property. And hopefully, we'll resolve that issue the next time around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll look for that when we look at the site plan.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Donavick?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for being here, sir. Anybody else from the council? Mr. McCullough?
Just a quick thing, it's kind of to echo. I know if there's some people in the audience, just to clarify, this is just the rezoning of that east 58 feet. This is not the site plan. This is just the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else from the council? Any audience communication on item number 24? Good evening, sir. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Donald Schechel.
Your address, please.
29161 Grandin.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. I have a couple of issues with this, and I brought it up before at a planning commission, then a last council meeting on this property. It's currently zoned C1, and you have the small portion right behind my house, rural family. I brought up the question is, when did this property get changed, zoning to C1? Previously, when that property first went up for sale, the, the lot 9120, the L-shaped lot, was single-family residential. The lot next to it was... to it was a commercial office. Now, no one had an answer as to when this got changed. No one could figure out when it got changed. Couldn't get an answer on it. I asked again at the Council meeting. Nobody could tell me when this property got, the zoning got changed.
With all due respect, sir, we asked Mr. Toramina to look into that, and I will ask him to when you're done speaking.
Okay. And so, and the other thing is, I have a problem with this being rezoned, is why are we going to C1, make everything C1, when you want to make it residential housing, or, excuse me, multiple housing, when a half mile away you have a plot of land that's currently commercial that you want to switch to multiple housing because you want to put an apartment complex there? I don't understand how, behind my house, it's going to be C1 unless you're going to use waivers. And that's my big concern, is we're going to use waivers so that we can fit this in there, a unit that's 24 units on, what, 1.7 acres, when the multiple housing you got right next door, which is three times the size, is only 27 units. And I haven't gotten any answers on anything. And just kind of bothers my mind how that works.
Sir, the only thing that's before the Council at this time is the rezoning. To make it a consistent zoning, some of the issues that you bring up have to do specifically with a potential waiver usage or a site plan being presented at a later date.
Well, my thing with the zoning is, is if you make this piece of property right behind you all C1, that gives you okay for the project to go ahead.
No, it does not. It makes a consistent zoning throughout that particular parcel.
Okay, and that gets back to the original question.
There would be a second round of them coming before us with a potential site plan, and if they wish to seek some sort of waiver petition at that time, then those comments, we would all be kind of on the same page in terms of understanding what we were looking at.
Okay, and then like I said, go back to the original question. When did all this get changed to C1 when it previously wasn't? And we were never, and I've lived there for years and years and years and have never been notified of any zoning change.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Toramina, when this gentleman spoke to us at the public hearing, I believe on February 23rd, that item and that question specifically did come up. We asked you to look into it. I think you presented an answer at that time, but you wanted to further research it. Do you have any further information for us at this time?
I did, and I think the minutes of the public hearing will reflect what was indicated at the time. I just didn't have the data in front of me. This map actually shows, this is a map from the rezoning that occurred in 1965 when the, the property was changed from R2 residential to a PS classification. That was the predecessor to the OS zoning. So, PS stood for Professional Services, which was an office classification. That later changed to OS. And then, as I explained, there was a change to C1 with the adoption of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance. So, this map again shows you the history, going back to 1965 when the zoning occurred. The property we're looking at today is situated right here. And I know what I can probably do, it's probably easier to illustrate this on the map. So, this is the parcel that we're considering to, to change the zoning, going back to that, this drawing, that area of land exists right here. The split of this property occurred in 1992. That was something that I was not aware of, but I went to the Assessment Department. They were able to confirm that the, the division of the property was something that was part of a lot split request dating back to 1992. And this is the, the survey from that lot split.
Well, this proves why we keep you around because you always do your homework.
Thank you, sir.
So, I'm satisfied with that answer. I see no further. Do we have audience communication additionally?
If I may?
Your name, please.
Brandon Grisco with the law firm Fosso and Bonn. I'm representing the current owner of the property of Insure Real Estate.
What would you like to say?
I'm obviously here representing not the petitioner, who is the purchaser of the property, but the seller of the property. Just like to urge the Council to consider the recommendation of the Planning Commission, adopt that recommendation, and move forward with the zoning so that we have a consistent zoning throughout the parcel, as I think would be good public policy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see no other. Mr. Toramina?
I would, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, just respond to the, the other item that Mr. Schuchel brought up, the concern relative to the zoning going to commercial as opposed to some other classification.
Sure. Yes, sir.
So, the benefit of that is, is it does allow, well, multifamily residential can be considered both under a commercial classification or under a multifamily classification. The benefit here is, is it would be treated as a waiver use. So, it gives this, the Planning Commission as well as Council, complete discretion as opposed to if it were under a multifamily classification and was treated as a site plan, the requirements would be much more rigid. So, quite, quite frankly, I think it gives, it's an advantage to the city to have it treated as a waiver as opposed to a permitted use.
Thank you, sir. With that, Ms. Nash, take the roll, please.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. Item 24 passes. The language will now be developed by the city attorney to make this a consistent C1 classification for the property. Item number 24, excuse me, 25, new business, a request to accept a grant from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC, from the Office of Government Affairs and the Engineering Division regarding the Bell Creek Stream Bank Stabilization, a green mead regional detention pond, and Denmark drain channel improvements. Who's going to be taking this? Mr. Zalinsik?
Good evening, Council President.
Actually, first I should say.
Chair offer an approving resolution.
I'll support.
Okay, who made the motion? Mr. Barr, support from McCullough. Mr. Zalinsik?
Just a brief summary here. Just want to thank Representative Pawlowski for getting the funding for this million dollars to help out some of the long-term issues we've been dealing with in the city of Livonia. Looking forward to working with LaShawn, who submitted the MED, the MDEC grant to them to get that million dollars for three separate projects, of which we'll be dealing with Bell Creek Stream Bank Stabilization, also with the green mead regional detention pond to help the folks at Willow Woods on Brenton, and then the final Denmark drain in which we want to obviously do some maintenance work there. So, those three projects are very important for the city of Livonia. And again, looking forward to moving forward with these projects on planning this year, some construction, and then finalizing them next, next year in 2023. And I'll turn it over to LaShawn or Representative Pawlowski to add anything more to that.
Ms. Pawlowski, would you like to address the Council?
Yes. Thank you very much. Todd did a great job of summarizing it. He's got much more of the detail-oriented parts. I just wanted to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come and speak to you about this multiple times and for your partnership on delivering the grant, a million dollars to the people in our community who desperately need it. I have said this virtually every time I've talked about the issue, but I'm going to say it again because it bears repeating for a few reasons. But the person who actually brought the issue of the erosion along Bell Creek was Councilwoman Toy. And during that first conversation, she told me that this has been an issue since she was a state representative for our district 20 years ago, back when she was only 21 years old.
That's it.
So, the residents that we serve have been dealing with things like falling trees, downed power lines, and their backyards literally falling into the creek because of this erosion for over two decades. I know that there are some here to talk about it. And the other reason that I want to bring that up is because it highlights the importance of different levels of government working together for the community that they represent. And I just have been very, very fortunate in my time so far in the legislature that I have dedicated and engaged partners in our city council. So, thank you. I appreciate the patience of the residents also. I'm sure that most of you have also been reached out to. But they made sure that this issue stayed on my radar and everyone here's radar over the last several years in, in my case, but as, again, as I said, decades. The pandemic sidelined a lot of previous budget items that the state had secured, including a previous iteration of this grant. And I know how frustrating that was for the residents. So, I have shared the photos with the Council, but this damage that the erosion has caused is, it's just, it's awful. It's, it's really profoundly problematic. So, I really do appreciate how gracious those impacted were and how they trusted me and my office when we assured them that despite the roadblocks put in the way, we really were working on securing these dollars. And I would appreciate you all being so gracious. I do just want to do a very quick shout out to Sarah Henning and Jeremy Glick in my office, both of whom worked tirelessly over the course of the last three years and were essential in, in getting this grant secured from the state. So, I want to thank the Council for helping to make sure that we're finally able to deal with the issue. And I will let the residents speak to it because they can talk about it far better than I can, but thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy?
If I may, you know, I want to congratulate our state representative because she, every time I've ever called her on anything, and it's a nuisance to have a former legislator keep calling you, but there, there's money to be had in that state, and Lori knew how to get it and, and go after it. And with the contacts, like she said, working together, that's what it's all about. And you can make good things happen, whether it's money or new policies or whatever. And I just, I want to commend you and your staff because without our staff, we would be nothing up there. And so, I just want to say that we're going to need you in the future, Representative, because there's a lot of money in that state right now, and it's not going to take a ton of lobbyists to get it. It's going to take our state rep, our state senator, and all of us working together to get that money, including us going up to Lansing. As you know, that impact is great when local elected officials come up. They're the lobbyists for themselves. We don't have to spend tons of money on a lobbyist to get money. Because of the low-hanging fruit you've got up there, I've been told, even by lobbyists, if everybody does their job, you'll get good money. So, let that be known to our Council and this administration that we can all work together. And you've been just an asset for us to help us. Thank you again, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else from the Council? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, big kudos, Representative Pawlowski. Honestly, I, the, one of the residents seen firsthand that her backyard is literally caving in. And I know that she's had this issue for 20 to 30 years is what she said, and it's gotten worse pretty much by the year. So, so seeing that actually specifically laid out with a dollar number, you know, talk is cheap. You actually delivered a million dollars and your staff, wonderful, wonderful job. Congratulations. Thank you so much. I know that all the residents that are, that are going to benefit from, from this. And it's just the neglect that has been there. So, these, these are great things for the future of our city and in the infrastructure. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
Quick question for Mr. Zalinsik, just out of curiosity. Todd, the Denmark drain, is that a particular section of the Denmark drain or is that many sections throughout? Because I, I'm picturing the area they're talking about. If I'm not mistaken, Denmark drain is, is north of that, right?
Correct. You know, we're going to, there's some issues with the tiger teeth that help diffuse the water as it, you know, on these heavy rainfalls. Some have deteriorated, so we're going to replace them with tiger teeth and do a little bit more open channel, and then obviously hopefully carry that forward in the future. But Doug Douglas Moore, they worked with the ARC to come up with a solution there, spending a couple hundred thousand dollars to address some of the issues for maintenance on that Denmark drain. So, you are correct.
Okay, thanks. And then just one comment briefly. You know, Councilwoman Toy talked about all the money that's available. And I'll just say, Representative Pawlowski, back just to our earlier item, when the mayor was first talking to us about the lobbyist topic we were talking about earlier, my, my comment to her was, when it came to state, was, we have a lobbyist at the state. It's our state representative. So, certainly thankful for you, your work on this. But I'll just put in a plug. I'm sure you're already talking to the mayor, but this Vision 21 thing is a lot bigger than a senior center. And if, if there's all that money up there, man, Livonia, I'd love to see some of that coming this way. So, thanks.
Any audience communication? There is none. Oh?
Neighbor.
Good evening, ma'am. State your name and address for the record, please.
Karen Canty, 37586 Kingsbury. And I've lived on the street for almost 20 years. I'm not on the creek side, but I just feel like if it's not taken care of, it's going to affect my neighbors on the creek side, their property values, which in turn is going to affect my property values. And I used to have a dog. My children were younger when we lived there. We used to walk that creek, and I hadn't been back there in about three or four years, and I went two weeks ago. And I was, I was flabbergasted. I mean, I just can't believe the erosion. It's terrible. And it's winding around, and I saw it cut into somebody else's yard. And I'm, we're here for our neighbors who have been working with Laura and Laura Toy and this Laura, and unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, Larry Amico and Irene West, but they have, you know, been fighting for this. And unfortunately, if something had been done a long time ago, they wouldn't have this problem. But my neighbor has lost 15 feet of her property. So, it's, you know, it's happening. So, I just really hope and appreciate that this money would go into it because it's a beautiful neighborhood. My husband grew up there, so he knows what the creek used to be like. He used to play down there. And there was 30-something kids on that street back in the 60s and 70s, and they all played there. And you just, it's dangerous. It's just really dangerous. There's no fence up or anything. You know, it's just, it's very scary. So, I, I really think you should go take a look, really, if you haven't, because it's, it's bad. But it just really needs to be covered up. And my husband even said, at Holmes Middle School, there was actually a creek that used to run along there where you see the fence and the sidewalk. I guess it's south to the track. There was a creek there, and that's been covered up, too. So, you know, you walk by there and you, you think, oh, that looks nice. You know, there's a fence there. They can walk there. It's just very dangerous for kids. And that's, that's, I'm just here to represent my neighbors. I, I don't know if any other neighbors are here tonight because a letter was sent out to the neighbors on both sides. I walked with my neighbor Irene to pass out information. We did this two weeks ago. So, I just, but I, I just don't think they've taken a look in their backyard. Most people don't even go outside unless they have to. So, I just don't think they've looked at the creek recently, but it's very bad. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I see no further audience communication. Ms. Nash, take the role, please.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The item number 25 passes. At this time, we will go back to Council comments, communication. I see none. Any closing comments from the audience? I see none.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Motion by Toy, support by Donavick. I think we can safely show seven on that. We will start the study meeting at 8:20.